All right. Agenda here. All right, let's call the meeting to orders. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I apologize for the delay today. Thank you for allowing us a quick break before we got back. Do we have any people wishing to address the board, Vicki? No, thank you. Can I get an approval of the minutes of January 3rd, please? Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hold on, I need a pen. Oh, here's one. Okay, and can I get an approval of the agenda, please? Second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Didn't see any conflicts of interest. Okay. And moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, can I get an approval, please?
So move.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to the reports of the president.
President Parker, members of the board. Good day. Craig Peters, Dean of Curriculum Instruction at Southeast Tech. I'm here for Jim Jacobson, he's called away today. Today we have a couple of programs from Industrial Division at Southeast. They're excellent programs, provide great opportunity. They work independently as well as together. So we're going to have welding and electrician. We have four of our faculty, and I'll have them come up and introduce themselves.
President Parker, members of Sioux Falls School Board. My name is Lindsay Whalen, representing Southeast Tech Electrician and Welding Programs. We'd like to present our story. With me today, we have Mike Bezdeczek, Terry Schneider, and Shayna Johnson. And we'll start off with the electrician program, which I'm part of, and Mike is as well. And we don't have a lot of fancy stats to go forward. You guys have probably seen some of this stuff with retention and student numbers, but we're actually a new program that started in the fall of 2015. And it's a two-year AAS degree. And then if we do, if the students do complete this program, they do get 2,000 hours towards their journeyman electrician license, so they have a chance to move on from there. And if you're not familiar with the process for journeyman electrician in the state of South Dakota, they are required to obtain 8,000 hours of electrical experience as an apprentice before they can qualify for the journeyman exam. Taking a look at the foundation, just want to give you a quick breakdown of our curriculum, what we've developed moving forward. First of all is our foundations, so these would be classes that they'll take in the first semester. Fundamentals, electricity, so this is electrical or ACDC theory, which is how electricity works and problems, a lot of labs in that one. Blueprint reading, which is important. We have with moving forward in the trades. And then we've got also National Electric Code. So one thing I want to emphasize on the code is that we have National Electric Code every single semester. So that's important. You can be the best electrician in the world, but if you don't understand the code, you're going to have a harder time moving forward. So that's emphasized in our program every single semester. Now if we take a look at the different layers, we do the foundation first. We set up the wiring essentials next, which is basically a couple of the different sectors that are going to be in the electrician field. And then we end up doing residential, commercial, and industrial. So we give, what I like to say to people coming into the program who are interested, we basically give you a taste of each sector in our industry, and then let the students choose which sector they want to go into. Lot of specialties that can be applied. And then move into control. And that's where we start adding more layers to the residential, more commercial, and industrial. When we move into motor controls, program with logic controllers, a lot of people just go, refer to those as PLCs. And then also building automation. So a lot of the stuff that we have for technology now, running buildings off of computer systems, heating, ventilating, air conditioning, lights, that type of thing. Also, we emphasize every single semester, safety. In our industry, it's very important, we have a dangerous job. So the stuff that we focus in on is NFPA 70E, National Fire Protection Agency. And then we also have first aid CPR, and then also OSHA is emphasized as well. So now we've got a breakdown of the program itself, just a little bit about myself, and then I'll pass it off to Mike. I went to Minnesota West in Jackson, got my diploma in construction electrician, straight out of high school. And then I did my journeyman, excuse me, my apprenticeship in Minnesota, got my journeyman license, and then I moved to, when I moved to South Dakota, I decided to go back to get my bachelor's degree in business administration from the University, USD Beacon School of Business. A master electrician, I have electrical contractors license in the state of South Dakota. I've also got the electrical contractors license for the city of Sioux Falls, which is a challenge in itself, if you guys have ever dealt with anything within the city. And then, like I said, I did my apprenticeship in Minnesota, so I still do hold my class, a journeyman license in the state of Minnesota. Worked so hard to get that, I'm never, not going to let that go, so. Even if it costs me a little money every year. When Jeff Crider was in here earlier, he would know that I started in operational services for Sioux Falls School District in 2012 as a journeyman electrician. About three or four months into it, we had our master electrician retire, and I took his position for holding the license for the school district. So I ended up knowing all the buildings around town. And then when this program came up and I was asked if I wanted, was interested in being an instructor, I said no. There was maybe a word or two before that, I can share that. I've actually, I came around to it, did some thought on it, and I heard some thinking about it, and I ended up making a transition from operational services to Southeast Tech. It was pretty smooth. And like I said, started this, I started there in April, and we started the program in the fall of 2015. So I'll move on to Mike, our other electrical instructor.
Thank you, Lindsay. My name is Mike Bezdeczek. I attended Mitchell Tech, got my associate's degree, electrical construction and maintenance. I spent some time working around the Brookings area. Got my contractor's license in South Dakota as well. Also spent four years in North Dakota, working on the oil field as an oil field electrician. So I have a master's license in North Dakota. Just talk a little bit about enrollment. Our class capacity is 24 students per year. As Lindsay mentioned, it's a two-year program. Right now, in our first-year students, we have 22. Second year is 18, so our retention's, you know, doing pretty well. Lose some students along the way for a number of different reasons. But as of December 1st, 2017, our program is full for next year, with 24 students, and then some with a waitlist and everything. So popularity of the program, very strong right now. And just talk a little bit about careers, salary along the way. Lindsay kind of mentioned different avenues to go down for the electrical industry. Residential, commercial, industrial would be more like your ethanol-type plants, oil field locations, commercial, obviously hospitals, school buildings, stuff like that, residential homes. Agriculture will be a farm. Maintenance would be, you know, out at Smith Field or something like that, just working in a factory or facility. Service work, automated control services as well. The job availability right now is great, as far as, you know, locally, Sioux Falls, within the state of South Dakota as well. But it allows, you know, through this degree, to get jobs across the nation internationally. You know, it allows you the ability to move around if you want. Our graduates right now are coming out, an average of like $18 an hour around the Sioux Falls area, which is a pretty good number. Journeymen in the area can make anywhere from $26 to $30 an hour. And then the top electricians across the US, and even in the area, you know, $100,000, $200,000 annually can be fairly common for that top 10% of graduates or electricians as well, so. I will pass this on now to the welding team and let them take over. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry Schneider. I'm Section Welding Instructor at Southeast Tech. A little bit about myself and everything. I'm certified welding inspector and certified welding educator, along with being a certified welder. I'll let Shayna go ahead and introduce herself.
Shayna Johnson, I teach a second section of welding. I'm a certified welder. Our comrade Clint cannot be here, he's watching my class today.
Again, the welding program at Southeast Tech, we're in the accredited AWS test facility. If you're not familiar with that, what that means and everything, we are a direct representative of the American Welding Society. We've been an ATF now for 19 years, and things like that. We were the first accredited test facility in the state of South Dakota. Currently, right now, as of probably last week, I myself have administered 1,900 AWS mold certification tests. And again, since we're an ATF, we administer certification tests to students as well as business and industry. So we have reached out to different states when it comes to certifying welders. I've been in North Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, just a few other states too, so.
Students can choose two different avenues when they enroll for the welding program. The most common one is the diploma. And what it breaks down is, we teach the four basic welding processes. So it's stick welding, MIG welding, TIG, and flux core, along with some basic cutting processes. We teach metallurgy, which is the science of metals. A welder needs to know how metals are going to react when we apply heat to it, because not everything is going to be the same. We teach welding discontinuities and defects. As much as we strive to be perfect, it doesn't always happen. So we have to understand, how did that bad weld happen? And how can we prevent it from happening again? And then we talk about welding blueprints and symbols. So for the diploma, they take those welding classes along with some general education courses. So basic math, basic English, which is called communications in the workplace. And then they do a basic computers, and then the mandatory student success. But if they don't like that avenue with the gen ads, then they can just strictly focus on the welding, and then they just get a certificate of completion instead of the diploma.
These are just a few pictures and everything of our welding lab. Students out in the lab doing different projects. You can see some of the things that we have in our facility. We're pretty fortunate in our welding program. We probably have the latest and greatest in welding technology. We keep current with welding technology. The students really appreciate that. We're not local and specified with a specific welding brand. The students have access to almost any type of welder and things like that, so. Couple pictures there, you can see our new ventilation system. We have a manifold system, state-of-the-art too, so.
We've gotten some new toys, if you want to say so. The welders in the corner, those are Phronius welders, they're Austrian, and they are way more high-tech than what we produce here. So it's pretty intense, students really love those. We have a water table, a plasma cutter. We have a Vertex welding machine, so we use that for training, or sometimes we use it for competitions between the students, and they always like to outdo each other. And then we got some new shears, some basic fabricating tools.
Again, the welding careers and things, there's, students have choices and things like that. For our area, a lot of students will go into the manufacturing field. However, they still have the ability to go into construction, pipeline, repair industries. The students in our welding program can leave with a welding diploma, plus two AWS weld certifications. So they can leave as certified welders and have a diploma. Another couple avenues too. They can also become welding instructors, welding engineers, non-destructive testing. We actually have students that have completed the program, and they're working for companies and stuff that do, you know, different types of non-destructive testing.
A few stats. We have two sections, so he teaches the morning, I teach the afternoon, and each section can hold 23 students. So if, in a perfect world, we can graduate 46 students after nine months. Job placement, 100%. Students always leave with a job before, they even have jobs before they graduate. This industry is booming. Average, it's about $17 an hour. So we're doing pretty good, we're on the up and up lately.
I'm curious, for both programs, do you have, do you know roughly what the average age of your students are? Do you get, like, students straight from high school? Or do you find that a lot of times it's people maybe doing a career change? They've, you know, been doing something for a while, and they're looking for something different, and then they go back to school?
Yeah, in our program, we have both. We've seen, we've seen different classes that maybe, our first-year class this year is a lot younger than maybe previous, but I don't know if it'd be half and half, but we do have quite a few young, but there are non-traditional components.
I was going to say, a perfect mixture of both. Students right out of high school and non-traditional.
And do you guys have any experiences or any classes that work with the CTE Academy? Do you get students who maybe have some introduction to welding or the electrician's courses through CTE, and then end up coming over?
Yeah, we've actually worked out, with the help of like line through CTE, that I take my students, the second-year students down there in my class, and we wire the houses that the students build.
Oh, nice.
At the CTE Academy. And then as we're there, we welcome high school students, any of them that are interested to walk around with us. Have my guys show them around, you know, any questions that they have, so they're more than happy to help us do that, so. Yeah, we've had a few students come through that went through the CTE program, yeah.
Good, thank you.
And then, so the certification from welding, is that national? Like, you can take that, so with the electric-
It's national certification.
That is national, but the contractor's license is just state, per state?
Yes, it's state, and then regions have reciprocal agreements among states. Usually, border states have that.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion to approve the academic program overview, please?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much. We, I think, this is my favorite part of our meetings, is just getting to know-
No offense.
No offense, guys, yeah. Rich's finance reports. But no, so it's just, it's really fun to have you guys come in and tell us about your programs, and so it's just great to see the engineering and welding doing so well, so, thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Thanks. President Parker and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be back for a second month. I'm excited to share with you our spring enrollment numbers, as well as give you an idea of where we're trending right now for Fall 2018 enrollment. All right, so this, this first slide is going to show our head count, 2015, 2018. And this spring semester was the first time that goals were really established, that we were working to meet. And we track them daily, and we have exceeded benchmarks in 2016 and 2017. And so looking at the specific number, you can see that we're up 7.6% for spring head count enrollment. A goal was established as well to track the credits, because our credits are equaling our revenue. And again, happy to report, when we look at that number, that we were up 5.5%, or about 1,400 credits this spring. I also threw in a slide that we didn't share with you last time for dual-credit and concurrent enrolled students. And so you can see from last year, we're up 62 students, or 31.9%, which is wonderful. And I asked our pre-college advisor, Anna Fisher, who's part of our admissions staff, I said, you know, what is, this is awesome, what do you attribute the growth to? And she said a couple things. The partnerships with CTE in Harrisburg have been wonderful. But she also said that parents and students are just becoming more aware of the benefits of dual-credit. And so we're actively always looking at ways that we can connect with more schools and get more students to take those through Southeast. All right, so moving on to applications. You can see that the Fall 2018 is the purple line there, and we are tracking ahead. And this next slide just compares last year to this year. Kind of show you where we're at, and we'll talk about why we think that is. And the monthly applications as well. Last year, for 2017, if you look at those green bar graphs, you can see that during four of the eight months, we exceeded Fall 2016. And those months were February, March, April, and May. So remember, last time we really talked about moving up those processes and implementing the AAR days. And so we're doing that same thing. And if you look at the purple line for 2018 in January, we're tracking ahead of where we were last year, well, the last several years. And so when you think about applications, and we're converting those to admits, in January 2018, we admitted 723 students out of 1,793 applicants. So that's a 40% conversion rate. And the year before, in 2017, we were about at 27.5% conversion rate. So making those changes and moving up processes is helping with that conversion rate. Again, last year is the year to beat, and so this kind of shows that process of what we're trying to accomplish. And when we look at actual numbers, you'll see that we're 15% ahead at the end of January from where we were last year. So about 234 applicants we've pushed through. Now looking at admitted. If you look at the green line for last year, again, I know we talked, you've probably heard this several times, but that jump was because of moving that matriculation fee or the registration fee back further in the funnel. So we saw that big jump in March, which was wonderful. And you can see where we're at this year with the purple line. And I'm going to go to the next slide here, looking at the monthly. And you see that jump again in March. What's really great is the AARs were implemented last year, and invitations were going out at the beginning of April. So now we're able to start working on that process now, and get invitations out even earlier, encouraging people to come to the AAR. So the process is working, and we continue to tweak it and make progress on making it better. So our Fall 2018 admitted numbers, of all the slides, this is the one that we always say we need to pay the most attention to. We need to continue beating last year's numbers. There's just another shot of our monthly admitted volume that we're bringing in. And it's great to see that we're up for 2018 in November, December, January, since we had that big jump last March. And finally, our last slide. You can see that admitted, again, converting more apps to admitted students, we're up 293 compared to where we were last year. So now our big project that we're working on is inviting those students to Southeast, on-campus, register, meet faculty members, all that good stuff, so. Do you have any questions for me?
I think it's exciting to hear the instructors talk about how their programs are full for this fall already. And that's a great sign, I think your numbers reflect that too. But what a great feeling to know that your classes are full, there's a demand, there's people who are excited this much in advance, and it's not like a classroom full of people who at the last minute decided, I'm just going to go back to school.
Right.
You know, and so people who are really planning and thinking, and hopefully taking the steps needed to have the financial aid available, and to, you know, arrange their schedules.
Take advantage of all those resources.
Yep, exactly. And so I think that's a good preparation, hopefully will make people be more successful long-term.
One thing I would just add is, you know, AAR is at the bottom of the enrollment funnel. We talk a lot about increasing the number at the top, but we're still working to get more people to enroll, pay, actually come to class. So it's still part of the admissions process. So even when we admit students, that doesn't mean they're students in the door. So that's why those AARs are really important. So I hope all those accepted students end up becoming enrolled students.
When the career counselors are put in place at the high schools, and through the Department of Labor, and with our city bank, when should we see that maybe bump with those helping in admittance and so forth?
Right, so I know that Renee Oina started her position in January here, and I'm meeting with her actually on Friday. I know they've been focusing a lot on getting students in internships, so we're going to be strategizing a little bit about how we can become better connected. So we're working out the details of what that will look like, and, but, yes, we're talking. Thanks. Anything else? Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion for the spring enrollment report, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? We're so excited to see you.
Well, here I am to deliver the, what I thought used to be the most favorite report to possibly the second, and maybe even the third most favorite.
Oh, no, no, it's not third.
Okay. I think there is five agenda items, so I'm going to go on to the most favorite report of today. So Rich Klune, Vice President of Finance and Operations. This is always my favorite report, because it's the mid-year one, and I can do the math, so I just divide by two. But just very quickly, as a replica, the first page of it is showing our cash balances as of December 3rd and 1st. And we've had this conversation before, just- And we've had this conversation before, just wanted to pass on, this is the cash that's reflected on the general ledger. There's also quite a bit of funds, and you would have seen that in the othos on the consolidated trust report. So we're holding funds and things move back and forth. So just be kind of aware of that type of thing, and you'll see it a little bit more when we get into some of the more detailed reports. Bottom line is, setting out about 5.3 million in our various funds, a little bit more in the post-secondary fund. I'm going to spend a little time talking about our food service fund and that cash balance, where that sits, and what we're trying to do to address some of those things, and then the Scarborough Center Fund as well. But to drill down into the first one, we're looking at the post-secondary vocational fund. And like I said, the mid-year report is always kind of an easy one to look at. It gives you a good measure of where we compare to where we were last year. So as you look at the first part of it and look at the revenue components of it, I think as you look at the tuition and fees, you see that we're a little bit ahead of where we were at last year at this time. One, that reflects on changes that were made in the budget, that's part of it. But the other part of it is, we're moving at a pace faster than what we anticipated. Megan's report, looking at our enrollment numbers, are reflecting that for the first half of the year. That's going to carry over as we come in and bring in the next month's report. I won't actually do a, an oral report unless you want me to move up to number four, number three, on those reports. But you'll start to see that moving as that January tuition starts to hit the financial statements, and you'll start seeing that moving ahead. But overall, we're on track. You know, you would kind of anticipate, we'd be halfway through the year, we'd be at about 50%. That's what it's showing. We're going to probably outperform on the tuition and fees, because you got to think about it, while we're halfway through the fiscal year, we're not halfway through our academic year, because we have a summer term as well. So we're going to catch up with that as once we get into the May and June, and jump out ahead of that a little bit. Jumping down below into the expenditure items, this one does track more equally throughout the year. We're sitting overall right at 50%. That's including the capital types of projects that happen. But when you look up at the operational, 48% of the year, there's always a little bit of an efficiency. And you talk about that on the K-12 side of things, maybe coming in a little bit under budget. The one differential that kind of jumped off the page at me when you were looking at this, comparing to last year, if you look at the dues and fees line item, you see 131,000 last year, 621 this year. That's just a timing difference on when we paid the transfer to the Board of, to the Board of Regions for the transferable gen ed. So that was just paid in December, and probably was in January last year. So you'll see that start to kind of catch up as you look at future reports. So not a lot of things to jump off the page on the post-secondary fund. We're going to now look at the next one, on the bookstore fund. This is one of the things that I kind of always talk about, it's less of an impact in the post-secondary fund, but it's a greater impact on the, on the enterprise funds because of the timing. And always remember that the expenditure side's tracking, because that's done through ties and through the K-12 accounts payable system. The revenue is on our system. So the revenues, when you look at and see a December report, that's really only reflecting our revenues through November. There's always a month delay in that reporting process as we transfer those funds from the post-secondary fund over into the district accounts, in our, from our accounts to your accounts. So one of the things to note there, as you look at the bottom line on the bookstore, you're seeing revenue over expenses of $250,000. So that initially might be concerning, but understand that's buying inventory and building up supplies for the sale that's going to happen in the spring term. So I have the behind-the-page look of this. So when you go out and you look at our December and January sales, that was about $619,000 in bookstore sales over those two months. So that pulls that number back up and changes that margin around, so where the revenues are exceeding. And so you're really looking at the timing differential that relates to that. When you look at the expenditure side of it down below the line, a couple things, again, jumping off the page. Communication services, really what's happening there, that dollar monitor, we didn't budget for it, but it's the way we're recording our shipping expenses, when we're mailing out textbooks and doing that type of thing. Excited to break that out. It used to be included as part of the cost of goods sold type of item in the supplies, so that's a differential there. You look at the supplies and materials, you see we're a little bit ahead of where we were at. That's a lot based on demand for material, increased enrollments, we're going to be buying more books. The other thing is, is we're starting to expand the sales of tools through the bookstore, so that's coming into that cost of goods sold item too. So you'll see that expenditure jump up a little bit there. Food service fund, as we flip into this one, and this kind of is tailing from the audit report that we talked about a few months ago. I'd like to tell you I have $71,000 in sales in January, but I don't, sorry. But one of the things to kind of keep in mind on, on the food service fund is, the first half of the year has about eight weeks where we don't have students on campus. Because you're thinking about when that summer term ends, at the end of, end of January, until we start, excuse me, the end of July, and where we start back up again in August. There's about a three-week window there where there's no students on campus. You look at our holiday break, there's another three to four weeks in there where we're not having a lot of student activity. So the point I'm trying to make is, on the second half of the year, there's less of that. We have students basically throughout the end of the fiscal year, through the end of June, with that one spring break week where we don't have any students on campus. So while the differential, when you look at our December sales, they were roughly $15,000. So that's showing expenditures over revenue of roughly $55,000. Anticipate that's going to narrow a little bit the second half of the year. We're continuing to look at this, this is coming out of that audit, kind of going way back, there's a negative cash balance out of there. Part of that is coming from the fact that we had initially talked about, when we bought the equipment for that, we were always going to do a transfer for the book, from the bookstore as, as an inter-fund loan. That money's never been moved. It wouldn't have shown up in anything you would have seen on an expenditure budget, because it's a balance sheet type of transfer. So at some point, we're going to move that money over, kind of been waiting for the bookstore to get all that cash and moving forward as we transfer that, and we'll make that. Second thing is, we're going to probably have to go back and look at the deficit that it operated in for FY17, and probably is going to need a cash infusion to bring that fund up. And it's probably going to be something that happens ongoing. And I, I think we're, we're looking at, we've reduced some of our labor costs in the operation, we're trying to do a little bit more promotion, we're going to continue to prove, pursue those types of activities and see if we can turn this around. But starting to come to the realization that I think it's going to wind up taking an ongoing subsidy if we want to continue to offer that program out there. So, but we'll continue to evaluate it, I think probably when I come back and do the third quarter report, that's when I'll try to move some of that money around, and you'll see some transfer appropriations coming in through the, through the consent agenda, or we can pull it off individually and look at that. But it's something we'll need to address, and it's something we addressed in the audit too, that that was going to be the way we resolve that negative cash balance, and, and we'll just kind of see as we move forward. Scarborough Center, we flipped the page. Similar type of thing, is it's related there. Again, this doesn't reflect their December sales, so if you throw in their December revenue, I shouldn't call them sales, but their childcare fees through December were roughly $15,000. So that narrows that negative differential down there of $22,000. That drops it down to about seven grand. So, little bit behind in where we were kind of anticipating we were going to be for the year, but this is one of those funds that, some years it bounces up, some years it goes down. And I think a few years ago, we did a cash infusion into that fund as well, but since that time, it's, it seemed to be holding its own. So, that's kind of a very quick, high-level overview of the, of the different funds. So I'd stand by for any questions that, that you would have. And I'll try to move up the ranking.
Any questions?
Well, just back to the food service.
Yeah.
Have you got an idea of what you think ongoing we might be looking at as a subsidy? I mean, I know we're a year and a half into, into the food service being there.
I think the, the quick answer is no. The longer answer is, obviously, we want to try to narrow that gap as much as we can. As I stood here today and kind of started penciling out, you look at that 55,000 through the first half of the year, knowing that the second half of the year is going to be a little bit better in terms of our sales, because we just have more people on campus, you know, 100 grand. And I, I mean, I'm swagging that at this point of, of where we think we're going to need to be. But we also want, also want to continue with some of our initiatives. So some of those things that we're looking at doing is trying to do more promotional, more inner-campus marketing and promotion of the food service program. The other thing we're looking at is our One Card System, trying to reach out to parents and say, hey, you can load dollars onto your student's One Card, and it's only for two purposes. You know, it's only good for printing and food, so you know that those dedicated dollars are going to wear as a parent you intend them to be. And thinking of my own daughter, I would be, feel good about knowing that that's all that she can use those funds for. Couple other things that we're looking at is trying to go out a little bit remotely. We're looking at some renovations in the bookstore, we, through Nebraska Book Company, we get rebate dollars. We're going to use some of those dollars to kind of restructure some of the displays in there, some of the counter space, and try to take some of the product over into Mickelson. You know, it's kind of if, if they won't come to us, we're going to try to take it out to them a little bit, see if we can encourage some of, of that type of activity. I think long-term, we might need to look at our course schedules a little bit, make sure we're providing enough separation, giving students enough time in their schedule to come over and utilize that. So we want to explore all of those initiatives, and it's not just an automatic, you know, here's $100,000, let's keep it going. It really was always intended to try to be self-supporting and self-sustaining. The reality of it is, first 18 months haven't, that hasn't been the case. I'm trying to do my part, I think, as, as you can tell, but there's only so much I can do.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Great. On, on, on the childcare and the food service, when's the last, have any surveys been done with students and staff?
Yeah, thanks for bringing, thanks for bringing that up. That was the other initiative we want to try to do. Not so much on Scarborough, you know, Tracy can speak to that better and where, where they're at. A lot of times, that's just a measurement of the student population that we have, and who needs that service. Staying on the Scarborough Center, one of the things that really helped that was when we opened that center up to the Sioux Falls School District staffing as well, that really helped stabilize that. When you think about a, a teacher that has a, a full-day commitment, and they're worth different than a student that's coming in and out. So we get that baseline, consistent payment, consistent enrollment types of things. That's really kind of helped stabilize some of that up and down with it. On the food service side, we started with an initial survey, and that's another action step we want to take, is to go out and reach out to folks and say, when are you on campus, when are you using it, what we can, what can we do to make it more attractive? Still kind of formulating some of those questions, that's part of our action plan as well, so thank you for mentioning that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I get a motion and a second for the, to approve the second quarter finance report.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
President Parker, members of the board, I'm back. I don't know how to run this, so I am again representing Jim, and that's why I'm blaming my lack of knowledge on his lack of knowledge. But we're going to cover the executive summary for Vet Tech. So as you can read on there, basically, we did have a request to Patrick Weber of Governor's Office of Economic Development, who is his policy advisor. We'd like to spare a special thanks to Representative Mickelson, if you can pass it on, he helped tremendously with that. I kind of want to talk about what we've done as a campus, and then kind of where we're at. So right now, we've had additional meetings with other members from the Governor's Office, and they came out and talked to our Ed Design and Delivery Group, and a lot of our faculty and some of our staff. We had very positive feedback from that group. As you know, South Dakota really focuses on value-added ag. And when you're looking at that, you need a lot of crucial, crucial positions to help create some situations, like hog barns came up. Well, again, the Vet Tech would be an ideal resource for people who could run a hog confinement unit, cattle operations, or whether you just have to have a veterinary service. So they were very, very supportive and encouraged us to continue this. We've also worked a lot with McCrossan Boys Ranch, and basically, this is an ideal situation. They're less than 10 minutes from our campus, they would host the large animal population for us, and they actually already have somewhat of a herd of cattle, they have the horses, they have some sheep, and basically, we just have to provide a little bit. We would be able to partner with them and help them maintain their livestock, and it'd be beneficial on both sides. Also, then we had Jeff Crater, who developed a blueprint for us, and what he was able to do was to take part of our existing Ed Wood Center and then modify it, creating all of the spaces we would need for laboratory and also for classroom. It would actually have a kind of a confined kennel area for the cats and the dogs, and what we would call the pocket pets. But it would also enable us to have the laboratory facilities for x-ray and surgery, all of which are required to be accredited for this program. And then, the other thing that we've also done is, we've also, well, actually, this is things that have happened to us, we've already been receiving student interest in the program. So we do think there is going to be a lot of interest in this program for the one year, again, which allows that ability to, again, people can work with animals, not go through quite the level of rigor with the laboratory and the large animal, but again, get them a degree and a job in an area that they would enjoy. Where we're at now is, we were awarded a half a million dollars from GoEd Futures Fund, but it is contingent, as you can see from the executive summary, based upon receiving finance on our own. But we're basically, you remember Shelley Anru came and talked about our plan, so we are putting this at the top of that plan. As that plan is just getting developed, the results of that fundraising is going to determine the start of this program. Ideally, we were hoping for a fall 2018 start, that's challenging for fundraising as well as for construction. We've also talked about a spring 19 start or possibly a fall 19 start. Right now, we want to tell you that we are working diligently on this, and we are hoping to have a defined answer within the next month. Any questions I can answer specifically for the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, I am, a motion and second to approve the Vet Tech update. So moved. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Great, moving on.
Good afternoon, President Parker, board members. Again, you know, thank you for your support of the Vet Tech Initiative. It's an expensive program in terms of facilities, faculty positions that are required, equipment. And so, we very much appreciate the support we've received and the help and assistance, not only from Representative Mickelson, but also Secretary of Agriculture Mike Jasper's. He's been out to our campus, we've had meetings in the Capitol with him, and I think between the two of them, they were able to help lobby the Governor's Office to render some support for the program. Because I can, I can tell you very firmly that we, without that support, we would not be able to offer that program. So we're excited about the opportunity. We had two or three different fundraising meetings so far in terms of donors that were developing the list, and it's going to be, hopefully, a good start to our Capitol campaign as, as well. I also wanted to just thank all the faculty that were here today. Many of them are quite nervous coming here, and it's, it very much appreciate you all in, in terms of your interest and asking questions in the follow-up. Because what we do, they're our mission, I mean, they're the way that we are able to accomplish that, and we want to reinforce that when we're here. Tell them certainly how much the, their good work is appreciated, because they are doing, you know, a great job. Our electrician program, as an example, you know, Megan had some numbers that she was sharing, and we're already full for fall. We are upping the cap, and we have so many students, I think we had something close to 60 applications or 28- to 60 applications or 28 spots. And that's amazing. And so with that type of demand, we're looking at some alternatives and like what we have done with other programs, mechatronics in the evening, welding in the evening, you know, is that a possibility with electrician? So there's a number of different things that are going on on campus. My item here is the 2018 Legislative Watch. It's been a busy session. I was just there yesterday. We had a joint appropriations meeting for the technical institutes budget, and I think we're going to be in good shape there as far as moving forward. But as the session unfolds, last year as an example, I guess there were 387 bills that were introduced, and this year alone, there are over 530 bills, 20 joint resolutions. And I think even with the executive summary that was provided to you, there are four bills that I was just going to touch base on. There are two additional bills that have come forward that, just to give you an idea of, as we follow and watch their progress. The first one on your list is House Bill 1099, the dual-credit subsidy. And the bill, as I understand, is intended to codify what is in essence the current program, so really no substantive changes there. There is a House Bill 1232, however, that I was informed directly contradicts House Bill 1099 and would prohibit the state or school district from subsidizing the cost of any high school dual-credit. So I think the concern that was expressed was that dual-credit's grown too large, and this would greatly reduce that opportunity for many, many students. And so we have voiced opposition to HB 1232. HB 1073 is the campus free bill, or free speech bill, that it sets up, or was proposed to set up, a very complicated test for any restriction on free speech and created an ability to sue school districts and higher education institutions for violation of free speech rights. The bill was voted down in committee, but it has reappeared as Senate Bill 198, and it's going up to a hearing on February 22nd, so we'll continue to monitor that. There's also Senate Bill 103 prohibits illegal aliens and students from attending post-secondary institutions. All four techs require, as part of the application process, notification that you are a U.S. citizen. So I don't think it was directed toward us, but more the state universities and so forth. So that is under discussion. And then I did find out today, House Bill 1274, which is the tobacco tax, was introduced this morning in committee but did not survive and did not make it out of committee. The two new bills that have come forward, there's a Senate Bill 201, which is being referred to as a blocked persons ban, and it's been introduced and assigned to a Senate State Affairs Committee. It would prohibit certain groups from coming onto campus, and we'll watch the progress on that.
What number is that again?
201.
201.
Senate Bill 201. And then House Bill 1277 is another recent addition, and that would provide an option for the Board of Technical Education to opt out of the Bureau of Administration and Office of the State Engineer Oversight of Construction Projects. And that does have some implications in terms of campus operations. It's being sponsored by the Governor's Office. The language itself just reads that it would exempt certain capital improvement projects from required supervision of the Bureau of Administration. So we're learning more, and there were a lot of emails that were flying back and forth on Saturday this past weekend based on that bill's introduction. If the bill passes, it would allow the Board to decide, the new Tech Board of Education, or Technical Education, to decide whether or not to engage in the Office of State Engineer Services. So it provides more of a, what I would say, more of a system approach to what has been totally local control, at least within the techs, in relation to construction. So some interesting pieces of legislation, you know, that are out there, and we'll continue to follow those and update you on those as well.
Great.
That would end my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No. Thank you for being responsive to what your students need and looking at if we are exceeding our capacity, maybe making alternative ways to meet those needs. So, thank you.
You know, it's been, at the state appropriations meeting yesterday, there were conversations about enrollment, so they asked each of the four tech presidents to report out in retention and enrollment. And it's so positive to be able to respond and say, you know, "We're not only up, we have the highest increase in the state of any two- or four-year institution in terms of enrollment. We're excited about that from the fall, but even better this spring in terms of 5.5% in credits, but 7% in new students." So we, you know, the bar has been set kind of high, so we need to work hard. But I think if we can continue to build those collaboration, those opportunities for collaboration with local industry, they've been very responsive, and we've had, you know, a number of very, very good meetings over the last couple of weeks on even more initiatives, potential new initiatives, some with Southeast Tech and CTE, some with the University Center, Southeast Tech, and so forth. So we'll continue to explore those, and hopefully Megan will continue to provide some real positive updates. No pressure there, Megan, at all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the legislative update?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. We are charged. Thank you.
Okay. If you can get your check, get it.